Good evening all, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for January 18th, 2022. And I will read that in compliance with Governor Baker's Declaration on June 16th, 2021, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and extended until April 1st, 2022, this meeting will be conducted virtually via Google meets. Our address is printed on the agenda for the Google meets and the phone line and the PIN for those who are not joining by computer. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and may be broadcast live and maybe livestreamed at www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chairman's decision. With that, I would ask that you all, if you're able to, rise and join us in saluting our flag, and I will turn my flag. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Right, so what I'm going to do is I am going to take out of order, we're pleased to have our state Senator Walter Timmeltie joining us tonight for a presentation, and I would like to extend the courtesy to have Senator Timmeltie maximize his time. We do appreciate the fact that he's there coming to meet with us tonight. So with that, Senator Timmeltie, the floor is all yours for your presentation, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you Chairman McRuskey, thank you very much, Vice Chair Roberts, Mr. Carrara, Mr. Gito, and Mr. Cavy, and of course Dr. Grimm. Thank you for this opportunity to appear in front of this august board tonight in conjunction with Representative Bill Galvin, Representative Ted Phillips, and Major Joe Bloom from the Massachusetts National Guard. As the Chair of the Public Safety and Homeland Security, which is a wonderful privilege that has been accorded to me by the Senate President in conjunction with the overriding privilege of representing the great town of Stoughton, I have the privilege of working with the National Guard. The Mass National Guard falls under the purview of the Homeland Security and Public Safety Committee. And with that, I've had the privilege and great experience of working very closely with our Adjutant General, General Gary Keefe, and the men and women of the National Guard, some of whom live in the town of Stoughton, our citizen soldiers. They serve around the globe globally protecting our great country, and they serve domestically. And one of the great, great tasks that the Mass National Guard performs incredibly well is cybersecurity. With that, as many of us are painfully aware, our cities and towns are very much behind in terms of cybersecurity and protecting our assets. And I just want to thank Rep. Phillips and Rep. Galvin for being great supporters of the National Guard and supporting this initiative. What I am seeking to do, and I am doing, on March 30th, I am hosting a seminar at the Braintree National Guard Armory in conjunction with General Gary Keefe, our Adjutant General in the Mass National Guard, to form partnerships with each and every one of the 10 towns that I represent. So tonight, I am here to invite the town of Stoughton in conjunction with Major Bloom, who is representing General Keefe, and of course with Rep. Phillips and Rep. Galvin, to invite Stoughton and its town government to participate in this seminar where the Mass National Guard will form a partnership with each and every town that I represent in terms of protection from cyber attacks, ransomware attacks, which of course are part of cyber attacks, which unfortunately, it's the age in which we live now. Criminal organizations seek to profit from cyber attacks, rogue nations, terrorist organizations launch cyber attacks on this great country of ours, and many cities and towns have been victimized by criminal and terrorist organizations throughout our country with cyber attacks. So with that, we will host a seminar and we will engage in a process where the National Guard will educate each and every town that I represent in conjunction with Rep. Phillips and Rep. Galvin as to what they can do to protect towns, to train our people, and to form a partnership that will long, long after the seminar on March 30th in terms of protecting the town of Stoughton and other towns from cyber attacks. So with that, with the permission of Chairman McRuskey and Vice Chair Roberts on the board, I would like to invite Major Joseph Bloom, Chairman McRuskey, from the Mass National Guard to talk about the capabilities of the Mass National Guard and what they will do with this partnership with the town of Stoughton.
Please Senator, go right ahead.
Thank you very much Chairman McRuskey. Major Bloom, are you on the air with us right now?
Yes, sir, I am.
Major Bloom, please, if you would, the floor is yours.
Thank you Senator Timmeltie, thank you to the board for allowing me to speak tonight. So, as we all know, cyber attacks, cyber threats are currently an ongoing problem throughout not only the nation but here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Just a couple of quick statistics to kind of give everybody an idea of how costly these cyber attacks can be and how frequent they are. One in six communities are actually hit by, in Massachusetts are actually hit by a cyber attack. Recently, in the news back in July 2021, Brockton PD was hit with a cyber attack that took down all of their, they had to take down all of their systems to scrub their networks and were forced to go what we call analog, so pen paper when issuing citations and receiving emergency phone calls and that kind of thing. These attacks can be very costly, up to almost $2 million in damages, and the frequency of attacks are only increasing as technology continues to be released at a rapid pace. So one of the things that the Massachusetts National Guard does is we actually have our soldiers and our Ameren, so we have over 60 soldiers and 150 airmen that are, that make up our cyber force structure here in the state, and they are trained and certified in a variety of cyber capabilities, primarily in defensive cyberspace operations, which is your computer network defense or your help desk or your IT guys that build and guard your networks. And through that training, through that expertise and the exercises that we've conducted, we've actually built fairly extensive partnerships, both in the private-public sector with private industry, federal and state agencies such as Mass State Police, the FBI, DHS. We've also built relationships with energy sector, critical infrastructure providers such as Eversource, Belco, MWRA worked with us in our recent exercise last year. We've also built some pretty extensive academic partnerships with UMass Dartmouth, who actually we collaborate with their cybersecurity center, as well as a developing or emerging partnership with Bridgewater State University and assisting with their development of their, what we call a cyber range, which is a computer facility that we're able to practice techniques and procedures for securing networks, and among several other emerging academic partnerships. So along with that support, we've actually developed a concept for providing this cybersecurity support to the municipalities and towns and cities in the Commonwealth. We actually conducted a proof-of-concept mission recently that allowed us to go out to a, one of the municipalities and kind of assess their network infrastructure in their town. This was a good assessment for not only the town but also their current IT director, who was surprised by the findings and how severe some of the vulnerabilities in that town were. What some of the things that we found were limited skills in the IT personnel or the IT, the IT section of that town was just relatively new and didn't have a good snapshot of what their network looked like. Some other things that we found were a lot of the hardware and software that they were using were at the end of its life, end of lifecycle, and end of support, meaning that any hacker could breach that network without a lot of effort, because things like Microsoft or even Apple did not have any security patches or updates for those operating systems that they were utilizing. So a lot of vulnerabilities that we found there. So some of the, so the goal of our program with supporting municipalities and towns is to provide sustainable cybersecurity support and assist in building cyber resilience across municipal organizations in the Commonwealth such as Stoughton. And our objectives are to promote some risk-based cybersecurity decision-making and readiness, build cyber resilience by providing that pre-incident support to the towns and municipalities, meaning we come out and we assess your network, it's any security vulnerabilities that we may find, we provide you a report on how to shore up those vulnerabilities, as well as assisting in building kind of the threat picture within the Commonwealth for not only your town but for the surrounding towns and municipalities, as well as engaging qualified civilians. So one of the other things that we're working on is engaging individuals within the Commonwealth that are qualified, whether it be professionals currently in the cybersecurity industry or those in academic settings such as students who've shown an aptitude for cybersecurity industry, and encouraging them to invest those skills in the Commonwealth and in their towns and municipalities by being a part of what we're calling the cybersecurity force for the Massachusetts State Defense Force, which is part of the organized militia under Mass General Law Chapter 33A. And that is where I will pause for any questions from the board.
Any questions of our board members?
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Gito.
There'll be a lot of money to bring the systems in the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth up to speed and a lot more to bring in enough qualified people to keep all of the systems in the municipalities safe. Is there anything that the state is thinking about, has assessed, to determine what that amount of money might be and how it will be distributed?
I can jump in on that one, Mr. Chair, Mr. Gito, if that's appropriate at this moment.
Right ahead Senator.
Yeah, thank you very much. Governor Baker just filed a public safety bond bill, and with that exercise that will be forthcoming shortly, I will be filing an amendment to carve out certain earmarks within that bond for cybersecurity with the National Guard and provide the resources for what our Mass National Guard and Major Bloom do so well in terms of cybersecurity and force protection and municipal protection for the Commonwealth. So I just want to assure the residents of this town and Stoughton Town Government that the partnership that the National Guard will be undertaking with the town of Stoughton and across the Commonwealth, of course, as Major Bloom has alluded to, I believe will be amply supplied in terms of resources. And Major Bloom, feel free to jump in, sorry to...
Yes, sir. So as far as that question regarding how to bring the systems up to speed and that kind of thing, there are avenues for grant funding through EOTs. There's a process to request funding to upgrade hardware and software necessary in order to shore up your networks and provide a more secure and stable communication, networking environment within the town of Stoughton.
In terms of grants, which obviously the major just alluded to, that is something that my office, Rep. Phillips' office, and Rep. Galvin's office were more than happy and hope to work with the town in advocating for those grant applications, and of course putting them together.
How big is that grant program?
Mr. Gito, that varies from year to year depending on the funding from the legislature, and obviously that is something that's a strong priority of mine as the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security. And, no, thank you, Mr. Gito, excellent question, and Major Bloom, of course, feel free to jump right in.
Yes, as the Senator said, the grant funding does vary, however, the process is available for the town to apply for a grant to build, to upgrade their networks and provide a more secure environment.
And, Mr. Gito, to your point, fortunately with the APPA funding, there's, you know, $3.6 billion were just earmarked throughout the Commonwealth by acts of the legislature after six hearings that House and Senate Ways and Means jointly conducted. There are more APPA funds remaining, and obviously, the economy fortunately is, the revenue collections are strong right now. So in the upcoming budget cycle, which we've just embarked upon in the legislature, I, of course, will be filing amendments to the Senate version of the budget in concert with Rep. Galvin and Rep. Phillips in the House to seek funding to help finance this partnership, which I believe is a much-needed partnership between the Mass National Guard and the cities and towns all across the Commonwealth, particularly the 10 towns that I'm privileged to represent. This is something that, as a nation, we live in a very dangerous world, we're all very well aware of that, and one of the dangers that we face as a nation is cyber attacks. And that happens on the national level, it happens on the economic level with private industry, and it happens at the local level, which we mentioned earlier in our conversation. So it's very important, and this partnership going forward, I believe, will be vital for each and every town in the Commonwealth.
Any questions of the board, Ms. Roberts?
Yes, I plan to attend. I think it's a very worthwhile endeavor. The hackers are out there, but I'm wondering throughout the webinar and process of this initiative, would you help us to develop a policy, a policy to keep us safe? And that is if, because we are our own worst enemy, they tell us over and over, do not give up your password, do not share that information with anyone, but the next step, if you accidentally share it, what do you do next? Do you report it to the police department, the CIA, the Federal Reserve Bank, you know, different channels to try to recruit those funds if they do get access to your bank accounts and your funding?
Major Bloom, with your permission, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, so one of the things that we actually assisted for our proof-of-concept mission, the town that we went to, they asked for that exact support with revamping their security policies, particularly access, network access, how to maintain password, like you just stated, changing your passwords frequently, password history, as well as the proper reporting procedures. So a lot of that information our soldiers who went out to this town, they received ahead of time that this is the state's policy for reporting a cyber incident or a cyber attack, and we provided that as part of the recommendations for updating the cybersecurity policies for that town.
Great.
So yes, we can most certainly assist with advising and assisting with writing proper cybersecurity policy for the town of Stoughton as well.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, may I jump in for a moment?
Yes, Senator, hold on one sec, Senator, go ahead.
Certainly, thank you very much. I was remiss in not mentioning earlier, over the summer back in June at the invitation of General Keefe, I attended what is dubbed Yankee Cybersecurity Exercise at Joint Base Cape Cod, and it was, the Mass National Guard hosted it, and I was able to witness all the New England National Guard, National Guard forces engaging in cybersecurity exercises, both offensive and defensive capabilities in conjunction with various federal agencies under the agents of Homeland Security. So I can assure the board that this seminar and the relationship that we are about to embark upon with the Mass National Guard and cybersecurity partnering up with the town of Stoughton will be all-encompassing. They are outstanding in what they do, and they very much want to fill the role of helping the cities and towns of the Commonwealth protect themselves from cyber attacks. So thank you, and sorry, Mr. Carrara, to interrupt.
No, no, I'm glad you said that, because through you, Mr. Chairman, grants and money are great, but my take on this would be training, education, and giving like our IT team the utilization of the cyber defense tools to protect our town. I mean, just getting a grant, but I think we need the people that are that level ahead to help in that area. Is that what will be provided to, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Senator, and to Major Bloom?
Yes, I'll jump in for a moment, Mr. Chair, with your permission, and then Major Bloom, if you could follow up. Absolutely, Mr. Carrara, I intend for this seminar and this budding relationship between the Mass National Guard and the town of Stoughton and each and every one of the towns I represent to be all-encompassing. And that is my intention and that is my goal, and I believe that will be the end result. So I'm excited about this. Unfortunately, cybersecurity and cyber attacks, cyber warfare is the aggression of the future, except unfortunately, the future's now.
I ran the campaign this year, my first time in a long time, that had to be run partially on computer, and who gets that? Me.
No, we've seen it in the national news, and it's not just a national threat. It is a threat that has foisted itself upon private businesses, it's foisted itself on communities in the Commonwealth, and for instance, Sturdy Hospital was a victim of a cyber attack. And, Mr. Chair, with you, with your permission, of course, if Major Bloom could jump in, please.
Major Bloom, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. So as far as training, education in cybersecurity, yes, we most certainly can or have the ability to provide any training requested. As far as providing the necessary tools, while many cybersecurity tools are open source, we are able to advise on the best tools for your IT personnel and your IT director to utilize in order to better protect your networks. So we do provide that advise and assist role with that training and education background to bring them up to, up to speed on proper cybersecurity techniques, tactics, and procedures, as well as the best tools to utilize and for us procure on their own. Like I said before, many tools are open source, some of the more specialized tools unfortunately are not. But yes, your IT director will be able to procure many of those on their own.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Major. That I figure if our IT people can grasp that learning and stuff, which I'm sure they'll be able to, they'll be able to pass it down to everybody else in the town hall. Thank you.
Mr. Cavy.
I have no questions, Senator and Representatives Phillips and Galvin, I appreciate you coming to me with us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, okay, any, Mr. Gito or anybody else, any last questions? All right, thank you, Senator, I don't have any questions, I was able to do a little bit of homework and read a few things online and, you know, and through Mass Municipal, I know some conversation there, which was good to hear that as well, some communities have taken advantage of this, and, you know, my thanks to you and your staff, Representative Galvin, Representative Phillips, who are with us as well. This is a great thing for municipal government, it gives us, you know, the opportunity to be in front of some of the issues that we see going on television, you know, whether it's a pipeline or Brockton Police Department, you know, many other people that have had their systems cut, and if people remember, we actually had one, one of our virtual meetings that really took a turn for the worse, thank God we were able to recover from that quickly, but very inappropriate video was shown. So we've seen it, we've just been luckier than a lot of communities, and the forethought of getting this done, you know, while we can be ahead of the game instead of waiting until it's out of control and trying to fix it, you know, is great, you know, being proactive, you can never have enough of that. So, Major Bloom or Senator Timmeltie, anything you'd like to add into this, you know, in your closing thoughts, feel free.
Well, thank you Chairman McRuskey, and to Vice Chair Roberts, Mr. Cavy, Mr. Carrara, Mr. Gito, and Dr. Grimm, thank you for this opportunity to, first of all, engage the National Guard in conjunction with the town of Stoughton. As I mentioned, this seminar will be on March 30th, however, this relationship will, through my office, will be fostering an earlier start than that to get the National Guard in working with the town of Stoughton, and obviously I'll be working with Rep. Phillips and Rep. Galvin, so thank you very much to the representatives for their support of this initiative and the National Guard. The Mass National Guard headquarters is at Hanscom Air Force Base in Bedford. At my request, General Keefe and Major Bloom and the Mass National Guard will co-host this seminar with myself at the Braintree National Guard to bring it closer. We're well aware that in municipal government, your time is precious each and every day, so this will make it for a shorter commute, and we'll have a very fruitful discussion that day with our experts like Major Bloom, and the partnership will begin well before that. But I thank you all very much, and Major Bloom, thank you very much. The National Guard, I've seen what you've done firsthand here at home, whether it be in Washington DC, where I had the privilege of traveling with General Keefe to meet with our troops, or working with the National Guard at Joint Base Cape Cod or at Hanscom Air Force Base. What the National Guard does in terms of protecting us abroad and at home in battling COVID and protecting us with cybersecurity, it's simply outstanding, we're deeply in the debt of our Guardsmen and Guardswomen. So I thank you all very much, and thanks Rep. Phillips and Rep. Galvin.
Senator Timmeltie, if you and the reps and Major Bloom would just be with me one sec, I do apologize, you know, that I was on the board questions. Dr. Grimm, I do apologize, you know, our town manager, you know, I wanted to open up, and I do apologize, you know, Robin, but as the town manager, questions on your staffing and things like that, I apologize. Any questions you have before we close?
No, I have no questions, but I know now who to reach out to as this starts to move forward, so we definitely will take advantage of this, and I want to thank our state delegation as always for representing Stoughton so well and making sure we're in the loop on all the things that are happening in the Commonwealth, and this is a particularly important thing. So we will be in touch as we go forward and looking to take fullest advantage of this program.
Chairman McRuskey and members of the board and Dr. Grimm, I'll make sure that my office will and myself keep you folks in the loop every step of the way as we embark upon this relationship with the Mass National Guard. I believe it's a relationship that is vital and it will pay dividends. But any questions anybody has, feel free to call me, many people in around town have my cell number, of course, or email, and we'll be right responsive, and to you, Major Bloom, thank you very much. And uh, to you, Major Bloom, uh, thank you very much, sir.
Thank, uh, Major Bloom, thank you very much, sir, for all you do. Thank you for your service to our state and to our country. Senator Timmeltie, Representative Phillips, uh, Representative Galvin, uh, I think this goes without saying is that thank you for your advocacy on behalf of the people of Stoughton at, at the State House. Uh, we couldn't ask for a better, you know, group of people that are out there, uh, with the institutional knowledge and uh, and they, they do live, uh, to the, the late, great Tip O'Neill, you know, is it's all, all the local politics, right? So you, you're there, you know us and you know the issues that face our town and uh thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right.
Good evening, everybody.
Look forward to our work, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Major.
Thanks, Major.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Chair McCrisky, Vice Chair Roberts and uh to the board of Stoughton, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll, let's go on to, we will go back up to citizens' requests. If there is anybody with citizens' requests, please unmute yourself, identify yourself for the record and um what your request is. I see Mr. Inzovino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, John Inzovino, um, Precinct Four here. Uh, I, I just wondered if you could uh explain something, Joe. I noticed um on your consent agenda, you have a ratification vote. And you had that special meeting last week to vote on moving the polling place. Um, and I know that had to be done uh because of the timing and so forth. And I was just curious if you could explain what the ratification is if you already voted this last week.
It was a vote, uh, but again, it had to be on the regular agenda from what we were told by council. We were told to uh, to do that and to ratify it in an open meeting. That was an emergency meeting, but this is so that everybody in town will hear it. It was done at a virtual meeting uh at the last minute. And uh, we were instructed by council to put it onto this agenda so that uh we could read it publicly and everybody would be aware of, of the vote.
All right, well, thank you very much for that explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Inzovino. Anybody else on, Mr. Inzovino, is that it? That all you had?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public on citizens' requests? If so, please identify yourself for the record.
Cynthia Walsh?
Yes, Ms. Walsh.
Uh, 1096 Fox Street. Um, when you talk about the ratification, I was listening to what you were saying to Mr. Inzovino. Um, my request is, I needed to know why, when, um, it's going to go into effect and how you're going to inform thousands of precinct three rep, uh, tree voters about the change. So if you're going to cover that later, I'm willing to wait.
No, we will, uh, to do that, I can see the town manager was all ready to answer that. She's the one that's handling this internally, so, uh, Dr. Grimm?
Yep, so our town clerk uh has already ordered postcards that will be mailed to every residence in Precinct Three to notify them of that change. We also will put it on the website and any other resource we have, but there will be a mailing to each home in Precinct Three, letting them know of this change.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Walsh.
Um, is this going to affect February first or is it later?
No. Madam, uh, Madam Town Manager?
Yep, this is just for the February first election.
Ouch, um, you don't have a very-
It may, I mean, if in the future there is an issue with that particular school, depending on the COVID status, it may happen in the future as well. But for now, this is for the February first. I believe the cards have been ordered and should be in the mail within a matter of days.
Because we only have a matter of days. Uh, thank you for the information, um, uh, Dr. Grimm and uh Chairman.
Thank you. Scott, you had a comment?
Um, through you to uh Town Manager Grimm. Um, Robin, do you need anything from the uh clerk?
No, she, uh, she is on it for these uh postcards and they should be out. And as I said, we'll also be putting that on the website. I think I've already put it on my Facebook page once, I'll put it again. She's put it on hers, I've got to copy it over to mine as well.
All right.
So it's, it's on social media.
Only because she just came in.
Yeah, no, it's all, it's all good. Postcards are ordered and should be, uh, should be out and about.
All right. They're going out tomorrow, she said.
Okay, on citizens' requests, is there anybody else that'd like to be recognized? If so, please unmute yourself and recognize and identify yourself for the record, please. Hearing nobody, I will ask one last time on citizens' requests, is there anybody would like to be heard? If so, please unmute yourself and identify yourself for the record on the citizens' request. Okay, hearing none on select board comments. We'll start with Mr. Carrara.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Mr. Kavy.
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavy. Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Roberts.
I have no comments, Mister, I mean, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gito.
I have no comments either. I generally ask that uh people recognize that they should vote on the first of February, but we've already talked about that.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Town Manager comments, Dr. Grimm.
Just a reminder from the treasurer that tax bills are due February first. Otherwise, that's it for me today.
Okay, thank you, Madam Town Manager. And, okay, so we have plenty of time. We will go in and I will yield to uh Madam Vice Chair Roberts uh to, on the public hearing notices.
Just a minute, please, almost there. Uh, this is for the Common Vic for Sunshine Rest- Brazilian Restaurant, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, a public hearing will be held by the Select Board on January 18th, 2022 to consider the application of Sunshine Brazilian Restaurant for a Common Vic license at Two Canton Street, Suite 119, Stoughton, Mass. 02072. Hearing to be held at 7:30 PM. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, it says Great Hall, but perfectly, Great Hall, Third Floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass, and via Google Meets and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Live, Livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212. Or email to DLeBlanc@Stoughton-MA.gov. Per order of Joseph M. McCrisky, Chairman.
With that, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So made.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Roberts, second by Mr. Gito to open the public hearing on the Sunshine Brazilian Restaurant. On the vote, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, so for the Sunshine Brazilian Restaurant located at Two Canton Street, uh, we received the Select Board's comments and approval from the Treasurer Collector, the Board of Health, Fire Department, Police Department, Water. The water meter was replaced in year 2019. The checklist also includes the contact sheet, application, workers' compensation insurance uh sheet. Though there was one item missing and that was the number of employees for the workers' compensation insurance. But I'm sure we can find that out if Ms. LeBlanc uh, subsequent to distributing the package, maybe she found out this information. Or maybe uh the owner of the Sunshine Brazilian Restaurant is on attending this meeting to provide that information. And then to continue on with our checklist, the affidavit that state taxes are paid was provided. Uh, it was advertised appropriately. There's a floor plan, a copy of the lease, uh, the check of the amount of $50 made payable to the town of Stoughton and the grease uh pumping receipt. Uh, this checklist doesn't include uh indication that they had liability insurance. However, their certificate of liability insurance was included. Uh, in my package, it seemed as if all of the um, the even number pages of the application were missing, but I don't know if anyone else found that to be true. But other than that, there were no material concerns.
Okay, uh, is the petitioner in, on the call with us? Is a petitioner for Sunrise Brazilian Restaurant on the call with us tonight? Okay. Yes, not, um, we do have all the, and, and I don't see the pages. Um, Deb LeBlanc, you have your hand up, please.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I did reach out to them today and um, they're gonna stop by the office tomorrow and give um a copy of, you know, the entire lease agreement. And um, the person I spoke to said there are three employees, which includes the owner and his wife. So, they weren't sure if they should put three or just the one employee.
Yeah, well, imagine anybody's taking a pay out of it is considered an employee, so they should err on the side of caution. So uh, the only thing, just on the um, the follow-up is if the, everybody remembers, this is one that um, for whatever reason, uh, was not submitted in a timely manner. Uh, there was a, um, I guess, a, a, an out of the country trip, uh, where the petitioners were not available. Uh, but then, you know, kind of failed to get everything in on time and that's why we're here. Um, Mr. Gito, Mr. Carrara will remember that uh, you know, this is, we were dealing with multiples of these at this time of the year. Uh, and lucky that it's only two right now, so uh, so again, um, the board, uh, one last, if anyone, the board for questions on the application? Scott?
There's, there's no mention of the grease trap on this. There, there, it says, I looked and saw Board of Health, but we gotta start getting something from um sewer and water because this place is on sewer. So it's not technically on a septic, which Board of Health would be uh on top of it. But Board of Health does handle the pumpers that are licensed to pump the grease, so we gotta start getting a, a, a line in here that says the grease trap is functioning, there's no problem.
Okay, the uh, all I did see, Scott, was that Larry Perry's letter, you know, said that they had no issues with it at the time. So I know that you're right, that it does not specifically mention that the grease trap is okay. Uh, but I will ask uh Water and Sewer, uh, Phil McNulty's with us here and his email, uh, in that email chain was very clear uh with the, the meter, so that's okay. But I will follow up with Board of Health and let them know that, you know, we want to hear, uh, you know, the grease trap is okay. Uh, because I agree, we did have issues before, it wasn't talked about, then we found out after the fact that it was an issue. So, okay, uh, so with that-
I just don't want the poor person to open up and then there's a, you know, a, a block in the line or something that bad. It, it should be all handled prior.
No, I agree with you, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Steve, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
No questions.
Mr. Gito?
None.
Okay, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, back up, back up, back up. Uh, Ms. Walsh?
Public.
Yeah, I, I called Ms. Walsh. Go right ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. I have um been to this eatery several times. It's one of uh, a very limited dining choices now available in the square, so I would urge you to approve their request.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Is there any other member of the public that'd like to be heard on this public hearing? One last call for anybody from the public to be heard on this public hearing for Sunrise Brazilian Restaurant. Hearing none on, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So made.
Motion made by Mr. Carrara?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kavy, Mr. Kavy. Uh, any last questions of the board? Hearing none on the motion. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Ms. Roberts?
Was that to close the public hearing?
Yes, that was, uh, that, we did close it, right? The vote, on the motion, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gito, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Uh, on um, motion, is there somebody that wants to make a motion?
Motion to approve with um the side letter from uh Engineering or Board of Health on the grease trap, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll reach out tomorrow on that. Motion made by Mr. Carrara for approval, second by Mr. Kavy. Uh, I do see that the petitioner has joined us, uh, Mr. Rujo. Uh, we are in the process of voting for your license, um, and there will be a couple of things we need to follow up on, but uh, this is the vote we're taking place, so on the motion to approve, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Mr. Rujo, your license has been renewed and we'll follow up. You could come in and see um Ms. LeBlanc in the next couple of days and we'll have your license signed for you and you can pick it up. Okay, you have to unmute yourself, we can't hear you. Okay. Okay, and you're all set, so you, you can come in, you know, call ahead, talk with Ms. LeBlanc and, and she'll let you know when you can come in. All right, thank you very much. And good luck. All right, Ms. Roberts, on our next public hearing.
A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on January 18th, 2022 to consider the application of Ori Love Story Restaurant LLC for wine and malt beverage license and Common Vic license at 434 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072. Hearing is to be held at 7:45 PM. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, Third Floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass, and via Google Meets and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connections for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212. Or email to DLeBlanc@Stoughton-MA.gov by 4:00 PM on January 18th, 2022. Per order of Joseph M. McCrisky, Chairman. This is a, an application for new retail establishment. And you're probably wondering why it's new. And that's because they were going to sell the business to someone else and then the buyer didn't fulfill the obligation because of, I don't have that complete information. So it's considered new and as a result uh, they had to notify their abutters. But going through our checklist, uh, included were approvals from the Police Department, Fire Department, Board of Health, Building, Treasurer Collector, Water. Uh, they received a new meter on November 2021. Workers' Comp Affidavit, uh, Business Contract Form was included. Sales Tax Affidavit was included. Outstanding were the Certificate of Insurance that's pending and the Grease Trap receipt is on the waiting list.
Ms. Roberts, uh, if you could just hold up one second, um, I just want to clarify. I see Mr. uh, Mr. Rujo is still on our call. Uh, Mr. Rujo, we approved your license and you're all set. You don't need to stay on the call if you don't want to, okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Roberts, thank you.
Oh.
Yeah, no, you're all set. Yeah, go ahead. I just wanted, they, they, she was staying on the call, I didn't want to stay there if she didn't have to.
I was gonna do the same thing. So everything looks as if it's in order.
Okay, yes, and then on-
Except for those items that I mentioned, the liability insurance.
Not all in order.
Right, the uh, this one, I just wanted to mention a little bit more. This is one that the actual, when the sale was going through, uh, the first thing they did was uh to transfer- the actual, when the sale was going through, the first thing they did was to transfer the liquor license, and then they found out after the fact that the sale wasn't gonna go through, and ABCC had documented, because the board did approve it, and it went through, the ABCC had the license in the name of the person who was going to buy the business. So what happened was that the proprietor, Ori a Love Story, did reach out to the ABCC, who instructed her to just send them a letter of the fact, and then to reapply for the license, and they would, they would support that, because the transaction never went through. So that's why we, you know, they just want to add that part to it. Okay, so on that, questions of the board? Mr. Carrara?
No, I have none.
Okay, Mr. Kaby?
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Roberts?
No questions.
Mr. Gito?
None.
Is there any member of the public that would like to be heard on this public hearing? One more time, is there any member of the public that would like to be heard on the public hearing of Ori a Love Story application for a liquor license? Wine, for malt and wine beverages. Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So made.
Motion made by Mr. Carrara to close the public hearing?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Roberts. On the, on the motion to close the public hearing, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Is there a motion for approval or denial?
Would a motion of continuance be in order, Mr. Chairman, till we get the other stuff answered? There seems to be a few things that Vice Chairman Roberts read off that we're waiting for.
Second.
Okay, on, is that a motion, Scott?
Yeah.
All right, motion is made by Scott to table it, seconded by Mr. Gito. On the motion for discussion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
No, no, do you have, this is a motion, do you have any discussion?
Oh, no discussion.
Mr. Kaby?
The only thing I would say, I'm fine with, with tabling this, is that the public hearing is not being continued, we've closed the public hearing. So anything we get after that point would be, would not be something we necessarily deliberate on as a public hearing, if I'm understanding this correctly, correct?
Yeah, all right, and then all I was gonna say is that we've done, Scott, I agree.
That's why I made the motion to continue it, not table it. Continue it means it can come back at a, at a subsequent meeting, no matter what, but we're not gonna take any input from.
We've already voted to close the public hearing.
Yeah, our business hasn't been voted on, we just closed the public hearing, our business is still on until we vote. So right now, I want to vote to continue this application until it meets the full criteria, then we can vote on it to hand it out.
I second that.
Yeah, if, if I can, we've done this before, Scott, where we just don't release the license until the documents come in.
No, no, we're, we're not gonna vote the license till the documents come in. I'm not playing the game, it's either.
It's not a game.
Everybody, it's a completed application, we go through this all the time, all bits and pieces, bits and pieces, bits and pieces, and then they open, no matter what.
Well, they won't, because they won't have a license, but okay, you know, like I said, we've done this many times, Scott.
Opening this down and give you the, the reason that they could open is because they weren't gonna have anybody sitting there, but they were gonna do takeout.
Okay, all right, I, I'm just saying, we have.
Vote it down, I'm, I'm not voting in completely.
All right, Scott, forget it, I'm not gonna bother trying to, you know, I'm trying to just have, you know, it's, we have done it, we have a regular practice of doing it, I was just trying to bring it up. If you don't want to do it, that's fine, you don't have to.
That's fine, somebody else make the motion then, vote on down, make the motion.
So on the motion, anybody else have questions? Mr. Gito, did you have a question on the motion at all?
No.
Okay, all right, great. So on the motion to continue the, the license application, all right, on the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, Ms., Deborah, when this is done, would you let us know so that we could come back and, and present those documents to us? I would say include the whole application again, and then, you know, recognize the information, the corrected information, if you could highlight that, so it's very visible, and when you get that, I will, you know, I will get that on the agenda ASAP.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will do that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have all that, and that is those two, so. Jumping all over back and forth to this document. All right, so now we have to open the warrant, and its votes may be taken. So with that, I will recognize Dr. Grimm, if you wanted to just go over the attached warrant.
Sure, and what we've at least done for the past few years, this has to be closed the first Tuesday of February, which is two weeks from now, so that gives everybody two weeks to take a look, add, change. The only thing that cannot be added are petitioned articles, which are, had to have been in by December 31st. There is one petitioned article that was in in time, it was not typed into the main document, but I believe Deb did scan it and send it over to you. But I will go over the remainder of the articles, I'm gonna do my best to try to share my screen, if I can. Ah, let's see, bear with me a second. Okay, let's try this. It's sent, touchscreen, window, there we go. Okay. So you should be seeing, right now, a draft of the warrant. Is everybody seeing that?
Can you enlarge it at all?
Yes.
Very small.
That's about as big as I can get this. It's full screen on mine right now, that's why.
Mine's perfect.
You can see it, Scott, he's got, he's got it in hard copy, I know. That's all right, I've got some weird windows showing up on my screen, I don't know, okay. Yeah, that's as big as I can make it.
Okay.
So you all, yeah, and you all should have it in your email there. I did make a couple changes today on things that had come into me today, unfortunately. But Article 2 is a, just a standard receiving report. By the way, Bill Rowe is on, if you have any questions, as is Mark Tisdale, Bill McNulty, and I believe Paul Jafun may be on. Accept and contract funds for town roads, those are your Chapter 90 on Article 3 and 4, this is outside funding that we accept. Article 5 allows us to dispose town property. Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 are our enterprise funds. Article 11 is the reauthorizing of revolving funds, there are no changes on our revolving funds this year, as far as, in the past, we've had to put some changes on them, but we have not made any changes. Supplemental fiscal year departmental budgets, we won't really know yet about those. The general fund operating budget, you will be voting tonight. Unpaid bills, we would not know until Bill has some closeout numbers. Same with our rescinding unissued borrowing authorization, these are against standard ones. And now we get to capital equipment purchases. So as you recall, this year, we tried very hard, that anything under $50,000, we slow but sure are trying to work into the operating budget, and we were able to do that for fire this year. So we absorb those in the operating budget, and I'm very proud of that, because from a standpoint of borrowing and capital, those are annual purchase and rightfully should be in there, and we will work on the few others that we have next year to do the same. The three unmarked cruisers, that's a town policy, excuse me, three marked cruisers a year, we need one unmarked, and a radio upgrade. The new ambulance for the fire department. And then, as you see, we see another trash packer, you, as you know, there's a two-year wait on these, and Tom has, had been holding them together by a shoestring, I was over there the other day with Paul and Richie, and we are in need. One six-wheel Ford 650 diesel dump, the trackless holder with attachments, and a dump body. And fleet maintenance, two food, pool vehicles, the white Ford electric cars that we have are getting pretty old now, and are becoming unreliable. We did buy a Ford Escape last year that's used out of fleet, it's used a lot in our inspections, the Escape seemed to work well, they're four-wheel, they can sort of go a little bit off-road if they have to go to any unique location, they are hybrid. Facilities, the coating of a metal roof for the police station, and some security upgrades townwide, and the total for that is 1.895 million. Article 17, wheelchair accessible swing at given school, this is something the school department had requested, I don't know if Dr. Rab is on tonight, but they did ask that we pull that out as a separate article, because they will want to address that as we go forward to town meeting. Article 18 is the Halloran Park Multi-Sport Court, this is some CPC funding that we've asked for, Senator Timolty had secured funding for street hockey boards, and when I started to work with Matt Quash on it, where he wanted to put those, he more creatively wanted to make a multi-sport complex with those at Halloran Park, which increases our basketball courts and street hockey, and actually becomes a sports complex right in, in town. And CPC has supported that. Reappropriating funds to OPEB, that'll be determined, as you know, I do have a line item in the budget for that, a small line item, just to show a willingness in the operating budget to start to address it, but we also sometimes do, when we close out the books, transfer more in there as well. Sewer pump station upgrades, Phil can get into more detail on these, but as you know, our pump stations do need maintenance and repair, and it is critical. Inflow and infiltration, INI is an annual one that we put on there to maintain our capital infrastructure. Washing Street Sewer Main Final Designs, this is from Atkinson to Kelsey, to see if the town will raise to appropriate funds to complete that project, that's about $150,000. Water main upgrades and improvements, so Phil asked me to put this in, because we now can borrow no interest on this. And so one of the reasons to put this in now is that we can go through MWRA for an interest-free loan to try to improve these water mains. As you know, our water mains are extremely old, our infrastructure is extremely old, and at some point, they're all going to need replacement, and this allows us to do this at no interest cost. We have a bylaw modification in here, that's a relatively small site plan bylaw modification. And because it's a small bylaw modification, the whole section has to get put in. Then there's a downtown zoning article. Parking lot and trail development, this is off Atkinson Avenue, there's some land that the CPC is interested, Conservation is interested in getting, and it's a nice area for us to have some conservation and access to allow for parking lot for some trail access. Bird Street Trail Network improvements, again, requested by Conservation. Street acceptance of Bergeron Way, I believe Mr. Tisdale has addressed that before. Stormwater program permit compliance, this is a new EPA mandate, or not new, a couple of years old at this point. Townwide hydraulic, hydrologic and hydraulic drainage analysis, this is another coming from Engineering. Discontinuance of Old Central Street. Tosca Drive Central and Canton intersection, the right-of-way acquisition, as you know, this is a major intersection repair that we're doing through the Commonwealth. Establishing historic preservation restriction in the Stoughton Depot, this is a placeholder right now, I have not brought this to the board before, as it was just brought to me recently, CPC is recommending that we get this designation, it is there a bit as a placeholder right now, by the time you close it, we will have more updated information. The CPC budget, and then some deposits to stabilization funds. We did receive from Historic a request to repair leaks in the roof of the Lucius Platt Building, and to evaluate a town-owned barn down West Street, these are relatively small projects, that was also from Historic. I did put a placeholder for proposed charter changes, a board member asked me to put a placeholder there for the board to discuss, and then, again, we have a petitioned article. So that is the warrant in a nutshell. We do have staff here to deal with specific questions, you may want to look at it and ask those questions on February 3rd, or February 4th, the night we close, and save the questions until then, you also could review those, and if you have individual questions that you want to send to the staff, just send me those questions, and I'll forward them to the appropriate staff, so that we don't have to take all that time up, you know, February 4th, if they're just questions you may individually have, that you don't feel have to be, you know, take the time at the meeting. So however you would like to do that, it's up to you, but at least you have the warrant in front of you, it's public now, and there may be a few more things coming from CPC, I don't think so, I think those last two that the Historic asked for were the last two that were gonna go in. But again, you know, over the next couple of weeks, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'll give you the appropriate staff to answer any questions, and if maybe questions you want to bring forward for the whole group, which is questions you individually have.
You're on mute, Mr. McRisky.
I apologize. Mr. Kaby, go right ahead.
Thanks, I raised my hand, it's just to, if anybody was curious, who had asked for the placeholder for the charter changes, that, that was me. I, I have some information that I'd like to provide for you guys, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, wasn't able to get it in by today, but, but I will have it by next week, and I'll, I'll send that out to everybody. The first request, and this would be something that, that if, I'm just interested in hearing the board's feelings about including this, the first one actually was, was something that Mr. Zemini had brought to me a while ago, and it was something that he brought to the Charter Review Committee, if I'm not mistaken, several years ago, and it has not seen the light of day. Charter review has not, I think they've only met recently, I think the first day they met was on, in this, this fiscal year, was in January, on January 6th, if I'm not mistaken, where they reorganized, and I could be wrong about that, though, but I believe they met up on January 6th, and they're pursuing a different project that, that won't make it to this, into this warrant. But I, I wanted to, to not keep this going for much longer, I think the request that he had was, was very sensible, and it looks like, sorry, I'll tell you what it, what it is, in a nutshell, it's a request to, or it's, it's a request to add to the charter a section that, that would address notifications for public hearings, essentially a set of standard guidelines to, to do that, currently that doesn't exist for any board or committee other than the Planning Board and the zoning board of appeals. I know that he is on, so I don't want to, I don't want to seal his thunder, he did the bulk of the work, I just really, you know, reviewed it, but I, but this is something I would love the board to take a look at, insert in this warrant, and, and move forward on it. The other item is a little bit more timely, I suppose, and that is that our, our charter requires that there be a polling location for elections in each of the precincts, and currently, we're not following that, as we all know, with, by having four or five vote in a single location. And more importantly, during, during things like pandemics, I do believe that, that the government should have a little bit of flexibility in how they manage certain elections, so I'd like to have that language removed, that requires that there be one in each precinct, though I, I think continuing that practice as a tradition, I certainly have no problems with that, I think it's good to do, but I don't want to have us in a situation where we're not able to fulfill requirements of voting in our town because of something like a natural disaster or, or a pandemic, that, where we might have to move to, you know, using several facilities in a different areas, may have to use the library and, and the council, Council on Aging, things like that, if, if they all kind of end up in the same precinct, I'd like to still be able to hold elections that are free and fair in, in cases where the logistics of that charter requirement are not possible. So those are the two changes I was looking to, to address. I will get the wording to, to everyone, so you can all review it, but that's where I'm coming from, thank you.
No problem, Mr. Kaby. All right, on that, any other comments, would anybody like to ask any specifics of the town manager of the particular articles as printed? Scott?
I'd like to ask through you to Mr. Kaby that these changes that you want, are these I'd like to ask through you to Mr. Kaby that these changes that you want are these voted by Charter Review already, or do they have to, once you word it, it has to go before Charter Review to be voted, right?
Neither. No, the Charter Review is not required to make a charter change. This Lake Board is able to make these recommendations. Solo, personally, I would love to get their input, just as a citizen who wants to hear the input of people who are thinking about these things. You know, I would love to hear their input. But I, they are working along a different line right now. So having them draft it, write it, sort of champion it through the town meeting process, I don't want to hand that off to them, but I would like to, I'd love to get their input.
So if you're planning to submit an article to town meeting, it has to go to a committee for their input, positive or negative, I believe.
It has to go to a standing committee.
Yes.
They're not a standing committee.
In the past, we have sent those to the Charter Review Committee.
Yeah, as I said, I'd love to hear their input, but I have no problems with that.
I mean, if we wanted to as well, we could tweak the wording of the article that says that, and that the input or, you know, decision be made by the, we can put it right into the article if you wanted to do that, instead of saying, you know, I'd like to hear their article, we'll require it. You know, we can do that as part of the article. If you want to do that, I'd suggest that we just write it right into the article.
Yeah, I don't want to stop anybody's toes, you know, I've always taken it very seriously, knowing my lane and trying to stick to it. And I certainly don't want to have this low-pass them without any input whatsoever. This is what they do. I just want to be able to move this through the process a little bit faster.
Okay. All right, so you'll have that information out there, and if you wanted to change that wording, if that's something you want to do, I see that Mark had his hand up, but you know, you can deal with Mark on that if you guys decide that, you know, that's really where you want to go, you know, you can do that as well. Okay, so on any other articles? Anybody have any questions at all? All right, so with that, entertain a motion to open the warrant.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Kaby to open the warrant.
I'll second that.
Second, I get Mr. Gito seconded on the warrant. So on the opening of the warrant, any future, any other discussions, conversations, questions, anything? Hearing none on the motion, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Sorry, we're going back and forth to start to end, to start to end. Okay, so town manager on the budget, Madam Town Manager.
Thank you. So I had presented to you formally two weeks ago, and then last Monday, you all had had some discussions and questions, and we found a few areas, there had been a decimal error that Mr. Gito found. And so we did some final tweaking, I worked with Mr. Rowe, we did some final numbers, and we worked with the school department as well. And I did, the version you have now has a few changes to it from what was presented. Couple of those changes, or those changes include reducing the IT by $3,200, so that 285 wasn't a direct correlation to adding all those up and it came to 285. Really, Trish was pulling together a draft to try to show how these costs are allocated. However, $3,200 specifically was going to software for the golf course. Realistically, the golf course should be paying for its own software at this point. It's functional enough that it does not need that subsidy from us. So we did take that 3,200, that will be an expense from the enterprise fund appropriately, and we reduced Trish's line item to about 281 and changed her 282. So that freed up 3,200 in the operating budget. We took that money and 5,000 of what we had added to the OPEB line item, and we did create a beautification line item per Mr. Gito's recommendation of approximately $8,200 that we put into the community events line. And the reason we put it there is I didn't want to put it in the parks line where it would get absorbed in just random tree cutting. We wanted it to be very focused for beautification. I talked to Matt Koshon, he's already involved with the downtown beautification group, and in fact, right now, we have a local developer who, on his own accord, is getting those lights properly electrified and wired so that we can have proper lights through the holidays. And Mr. Koshon already took a tour with a beautification expert this week with Janice, and he's actually getting prices on the types of things we can do for plantings and general downtown center beautification. I did tell him what this was, the number we were putting in there, and he feels that they can, that can go a long way. So we have approximately $8,000 in that line item. I did, it may not be in that version of the budget, but I did hear the discussion on the $7,800 for the superintendent in the golf course, and a lot of people, it seemed that people were a little uncomfortable with that dramatic of a raise, despite the fact that it is based on comparables. I am proposing that we knock that to 3,900, and again, we're going to be using 3,200 for the software anyway, for the enterprise fund. Again, I'm trying to retain good employees, and you know, when I look at the comparables, it is under what many of the comparables are. So I still propose 3,900, and then that 3,200 for software, instead of that coming out of the operating budget. That doesn't impact the bottom line of the operating budget, though. That aspect is that was originally from the enterprise fund. And finally, Dr. Robb and the school department had indicated that they were comfortable with their December budget as they had voted it, and they feel they can operate within the confines of that December budget, as I feel we can operate in the confines of what I presented to you at this point. As such, there was $52,900 that the schools had removed from their budget. They believe they can operate within the confines of what they have in December, they are comfortable. I believe we are comfortable. My recommendation is that we just decrease what we raise on the levy by 52,900. What that means, it's a minimal change for the average homeowner, it's a small amount on a large budget. But just philosophically, if we don't have to raise it, then I'm just recommending that we don't raise the levy that difference. The only thing that will impact a little bit is next year, if we go up to 2.5, it's on a slightly smaller number because it compounds. So it's on, instead of a full 2.5 on the levy this year, it's on 2.499, let's say. When we do out the math, I believe the difference is about $1,000 in our revenue next year. So it will not impact us if we didn't raise a million this year and ended up next year starting that much lower, 2.5 almost becomes a smaller number next year. But because it's a relatively small amount of money, it really will only impact us by at most about $1,000 next year. But I do think it sends a message that we are operating as tightly as we can and making every effort to provide the services without taking one penny of additional taxpayer money than we need to. That is my recommendation. I realize it's a small number, and most people probably won't see it as a blip on their tax bill, but it is my recommendation that we take that 529 and just reduce that off the levy that we get from our taxpayers. So those are the changes to the budget from the last time, and at this point, it's for the board to make those determinations and go from there, and obviously I'll answer any questions.
Scott, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Robin, I received a budget before the weekend, and are we working off of January 13th, 2022 budget?
Yes. The only thing that's not in that one was the reduction on the golf course supervisor.
Yeah, now let me ask you a question, because we're going to do math here. It's 2021 actual, we're adding the 3,900 to, not the 1.75 raise on top of that, then another 30, right?
Whatever you see on that actual number is the actual number, yes. It's not 1.75 plus, no.
No, no, it says 73,560, add 3,900, you come out with 77,460.
Yes, yes.
All right. I just want to make sure.
Absolutely, no, understood.
I vote that I'm doing the right thing in my mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Gito, any questions? There you go, Mr. Gito.
Yes, I had sent out something that I thought was a little bit. I thought it would solve the problems that we were dealing with last week and would set the town up a little bit better than what I think is happening here now. But, and so if you don't mind, I would like to read a couple of paragraphs that I had sent around.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So my goal is to make two changes to fairly allocate changes in the budget and further the interests of the town. The two factors prompt this action, the change in the purchase of services item from the last discussion, and the error in the Council on Aging Department for the clerical salaries line of $64,155, which is actually a grant-funded position. So I would like to make sure that the IT program gets the money that the town manager wanted. I think that more work is required to improve the IT process and would approve her ideas on that. The Council on Aging error, I think, needs a correction. And I propose that the Select Board further the interests of the town by doing the following with the $64,155. I would like to begin to prepare for the 300th anniversary of the Stoughtons becoming a town. That's coming up, what is it, in 2026 or 2027? By putting $20,000 from a portion of the Council on Aging budget into the Parks Department budget to begin to beautify the town-owned property by creating plantings and gateways in other spaces in the town, and put the remaining $44,155 in the General Stabilization Fund for the anticipated need to fund a new school or other emergency needs that may arise in the town. So to accomplish this, I move that the Select Board decrease the Council on Aging Department, 541 Clerical Salaries Line, item of $64,155, to zero. And that, that amount of money, $64,155, be allocated to the budget as follows. $20,000 to be transferred to the Parks Department Budget, number 650, by inserting this $20,000 in the salaries section, a new temporary wage line, item 512000, and what, $44,155 be transferred to the General Stabilization Fund Department, 940. So that would be my motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gito, as written, and seconded by Mr. Carrara. And I see that Dr. Rim has raised her hand.
Just for clarification, I believe that the version you have, that 64 was already pulled out.
No, it had not been, not from the last budget that we talked about. The budget that we talked about had that in it.
So Council on Aging, I have a January 10th budget in front of me, and I have that 64,155 zeroed out on town manager request.
What page is that, Robin?
I'm looking at page 39. I have a text into Bill Rowe. Bill, are you on? Page 39, I believe we'll pull that out, and that was where we realized we had the 529 extra, if you will, and then put the rest of it toward the OPEB.
I think that that happened after our meeting, did it not?
No, I thought that was two meetings before, because I'm looking at a January 10th budget.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
The last, yeah, I mean, I don't know exactly when I had the discussion with Bill Rowe, but I believe you found that error two meetings ago. Bill, I see Bill on.
Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, it was on January 4th, we had the, we noticed the error. We didn't do any additional presentations since then. So in the presentation that went out last Friday, the grand clerical salaries were zeroed out. We had restored the school budget to its original request by increasing their budget 52,599. We increased the health insurance OPEB transfer line by 11,556. So that took care of the 64,155. Then we added 8,300 to community events by reducing the information systems by 3,300 and OPEB transfer by 5,000. And then.
Well, I guess I didn't get a hard copy of that last item.
And this one, the 113 budget I have, Lou, it's gone. It's, you know, it says, if you don't have that, you wouldn't see it.
That was, that was where the 529 came, that we asked the schools about restoring, and they indicated they were comfortable with their December voted budget. And that was, that's why the suggestion to just increase the levy that much less.
Yeah, it was actually 52,599.
Thanks, Bill.
Quite frankly, I would put that money into a stabilization fund. Because we're going to, we're going to be dealing with a new school in a couple of years, and, you know, it doesn't seem to make an awful lot of sense to, to not recognize that.
Anybody else on the issue? Steve?
Yes, I've been thinking about this for several hours now, and really trying to figure out, you know, what makes sense to me. I think in the long run, it's a very small amount of money relative to the full budget. To that end, you know, I do, I think what my feeling is, is that the symbolism of how it's used is almost more valuable than whatever service might be geared from it. So I, in the one case, I feel like, in this case, I feel like, you know, the options are, you know, find a place for it, for this additional money that we are capable of borrowing, but we don't need nor fill the operations that are designed to fill the mission of the town, vision of the Select Board as it currently is. Or we can just not borrow it, and just not borrow, not really tax it, not take it from people. That's the alternative, and I ultimately I come down on, I think, being honestly a better message for the taxpayers. I think it's a better, you know, I think it's a stronger place to stand on to say that, you know, we have a mission, that's going to cost a certain amount of money, this is what it costs, and we're not going to be taking more than we need to fulfill that mission. If, I think if we had a project that we have been holding off on for years and years that, you know, this money would cover, I might feel differently. You know, if we weren't able to move, if in this year we weren't able to move in the work that we do with ponds and lakes, the water management into the budget, you know, here's the 50,000 that would have covered it, and that makes sense. But we don't, we don't have a project like that articulated. We have some projects on the horizon, but I don't know how I feel about storing money for projects, essentially appropriating money for projects that have not yet been voted on by town meeting or approved in any meaningful way. The more I work through it, I think the symbolism of. You know, the more I work through it, I think the symbolism of not using it and not taxing it honestly is a stronger message and one that I feel I can support. It is a small amount of money. If the rest of the board disagrees with me, I respect that. I have no problems with that. Ultimately, the other day, I don't think this is going to make or break, you know, anything about our town. But from my perspective, I think that I do endorse the idea of not taxing money that we don't have a plan for. Thank you.
The only thing that I would say, Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Chairman, is that we do have a plan. The plan is to build a school in a couple of years and we're going to have to go to the voters at that time and pay for that. And if we, if we don't put that money aside, 50 or 40,000 now, we'll just put it on the tax bill a couple of years from now. And it's just how you want to look at it. So it's not as though there isn't something to do with it. It's, is it an immediate cost for this very year? So that's the only thing that I would change in your position. And if the vote is to do what the town manager recommended, then I have no problem.
Dr. Grimm? You're on mute.
To both Mr. Gito and Mr. Kavy's point, it's a relatively small amount of money. But, and as you all know, I am a fan of supporting stabilization funds and growing them. We look at that with our rating agencies. And I think that the past few years, because of emergency spending and the fact that our revenues came in stronger than we anticipated with COVID and the fact that we had been doing emergency spending, we have been able to shore up those stabilization funds. We've had free cash. I'd love to see more free cash. I'd love to see 2 million more in our unrestricted fund balance. But again, the 52,000 is a relatively small amount that had been originally planned as operating money. We are still funding our debt service line item. And that's important that that's going to be funded fully for this year in what we anticipated, an appropriate amount. So again, it's a philosophic question for the board. There's no real right or wrong on it. I put it out there because it was money that was in the original operating plans, if you will, and then didn't need to be in the original, it didn't need to stay in the operating plans. So it's a suggestion I put out there. Is it somewhat symbolic? Probably yes. Again, and even if we saved it for school, to Mr. Gito's point, it's a teardrop in a swimming pool. But either way you look at it, you know, just to do something appropriate with it, whether it's stabilization or just not doing the levy, I think either way works. But again, I just think that we like to at least be able to say to the taxpayers that if it's not absolutely necessary and we can operate in the confines of the operating budget in the services that we're presenting, then let's at least give them some sense of relief.
Is there, Ms. Roberts?
Yes, I had my hand up for a little while.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
Okay, well, that's okay. You know, I thought long and hard about that question as well. And one of the things that I was torn was not taxing when you don't have a plan for something. So for dollar amount, no matter how small or you think immaterial is to 112 million dollar budget, so have a plan for everything that you do and every dollar that you have. Another thing I thought about was we were going to allocate or pay down on our OPEB money and it was an arbitrary number, 18,000. And I originally felt like, oh, that's a strange number. Why isn't that more of a rounder number, like round that up to 20,000? Because I know it's good faith to pay anything toward that, but if you can do a round number that's easily reportable and calculatable and the whole bit. So that was the second thing. And then the third thing, I remember our original conversation, which was, here we go back to turnbacks. Turnbacks, we were expecting to maybe get a million dollars turnback, whatever it is, it's going to be 1%, 2% of our overall budget. Well, then there was a tentative agreement for those dollars to go toward a future project. So to be put in some type of safe stabilization so we can start building our funds for a new project. And it could be for the school or it could be for the police station, but it could be for something, right? So that turnback dollars would be used for those purposes and that's what we had discussed early on. So those are the three things, but I guess the most importantly to me is what I said initially. Have a plan for every dollar that you're going to use.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, this is not a public hearing, but the chair of the finance committee has raised his hand. If it's a quick question, Vaughn, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question regarding on your agenda, it's listed as Article 28 has to do with the compliance, stormwater compliance, I think it's what it says on here. I think you actually call it Article 29 now. And it's $95,000, but according to this, it's required by the state and through the EPA. So I was wondering why it's an article, if it's a requirement. We talked about this last year, too.
What's that again?
An article on your list here, it's Article 28. I think it's, yeah, I think you actually just called it Article 29.
Well, you know, on that, Vaughn, if you could work with us and let us get through this issue with the budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I mean, and we'll come back to, let us finish this discussion and get the budget up or down what we're going to do here. And what we'll do is, you know, we'll back that up because we've already gone through all the article issues, but you know, we'll take a look at that if we can get it done.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just remember last year, I know last year there was a discussion about putting it into the budget. That's why I thought I'd mention it now, but thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, hold on and we'll get right back to you on it.
Townway hydraulic.
All right, so on the budget, we do have a motion on the floor, so let's finish this up. Any other questions? Anybody? Hearing none. We have a motion that's been made and seconded. And on that, I will call for the motion. On the motion, Mr. Gito?
Please repeat that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to ask the same thing.
It was just to submit the budget as it's been presented, but right now we have a motion here on Mr. Gito's article, issue of changing it. So before, you know, of where these funds go. So that was Mr. Gito's motion that I would ask Mr. Gito to please, because it was a lengthy motion, to make sure that that gets verbatim transferred to Ms. LeBlanc so that she can add that to the minute so it's accurate.
I will do that.
Thank you. So we have Mr. Gito's motion that we're voting on now. Okay, so on Mr. Gito's motion, Mr. Carrara?
And that was the reduction from the 64,155?
Yes. Which apparently isn't there.
No, okay. So I'll vote no.
Okay, Mr. Kavy?
No.
Mr. Gito?
If 64,155 is not around, I'm not going to vote for that motion.
Ms. Roberts?
No, I vote no.
And the chair votes no. Okay. So now that that has been done, is there a motion to be made on the budget?
I move that we, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Roberts?
I move that we accept Dr. Grimm's budget as described, dated January 13th, 2022.
The motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
With the changes that Dr. Grimm has made to the budget.
Yes, and that was the January 13th.
Well, the changes aren't in there for certain things. She told us what some of them were.
Oh, there's one, there's one that was not, the superintendent's salary was not included in that. That was one that didn't get caught in that. But otherwise, all those other changes are in there, yes. So with that one other change.
So a friendly amendment with that one other change of the superintendent's budget.
And that's the Cedar Hill, right? That would be the manager. Okay, Robin.
Okay, is there, all right, so we have that amendment in there as well, so again.
It's just like.
Yeah, all right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any last questions? Anybody? Just speak up now before we call for the vote. All right, so hearing none. On the motion, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? Mr. Gito, you're on mute. Oh, there you go.
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, let's back up then. Mr. Onoki, and you're still with us? There you are. You got your hand up, so let's.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can put my hand down. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay.
I had just brought up that on your list here, Article 28, stormwater program permit compliance to see if the town, well, you have it in front of you. But it says, it says it's all activities associated with and required by the state regarding compliance with the Environmental Protection Agency's stormwater MS4 permit. It's a requirement. It's not optional. So I was, I was just bringing that up that maybe it shouldn't be an article. It should be in the budget like we talked about last year.
Madam Town Manager?
Yeah, I'll defer to Mark Tisdale on the details of that, but as we had talked about, again, 95,000 in the operating budget, we'd started to try to roll some of these annual costs into the operating budget. We did not have any one line item that certainly would have offset that. I will defer to Mark on the details of it, but again, anything over 50,000 on one massive expenditure, we typically would put in front of town meeting. Mark?
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Tisdale?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the question, Vaughn. I do remember you bringing that up last year. A few things going on with this. We do have a five-year plan for the MS4 program that you'll see Vaughn as part of your backup for the article. It's all over the place. You know, we kind of thought last year we would average about 100,000 and generally that's the case. It's about 100,000 per year for that program, but it does go up and down per year. And then there's a couple of years where we're required to do capital improvements. In other words, construct stormwater improvements on town properties. So that number's going to vary over the year, so it's a tough number to put in the budget. I wish it was a consistent 100,000 per year because I totally agree with you on that. It would be much easier just to put it in the budget and not ask town meeting for an article every year on this.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Tisdale. I was just concerned if my chances didn't pass, that all of a sudden we'd be in violation. That's all, but thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Onoki.
Thanks, Mark.
So moving forward, yes, Mark, thank you for chiming in. So on to the consent agenda items, A through E. And I believe, Madam Town Manager, we do have to ratify the vote and read that and for the record.
Yes, I believe so.
Right, so with that, item B on the consent agenda. Would, who would like to read it in? I'll read it in if nobody else wants to do it.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, Mr. Kavy, you're on.
Okay, so I move that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 24, the select board relocate the polling place for Precinct 3, normally located at the South School, and to designate for the February 1st, 2022 special election, Cedar Hills Golf Course, 1137 Park Street, as the polling place for Precinct 3. And further, to authorize and instruct the town manager to forthwith post a printed description of that polling place in at least three public places in Precinct 3. To give notice by mail to each resident of one or more registered voters therein and to give further notice thereof as may be necessary and appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kavy. That has been read into the record and will be recorded in the vote accordingly. So on the consent agenda, item A, B, C, D, and E, is there any comments, any questions? Mr. Carrara, anything?
Nope.
Mr. Kavy?
None.
Mr. Gito?
None.
Ms. Roberts?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's attend a motion on the consent agenda items, A, B, C, D, and E.
So made.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carrara for the approval of the consent agenda, seconded by Mr. Kavy. Any last questions? Hearing none. On the motion, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should consider having an executive session to discuss some of the items that have.
Yes, I am already in conversation with Mr. Winner of his availability. And there was something there that we need to talk about. So I will get back to everybody as soon as we find out what his availability is, look at our schedule and to get on that as well.
I certainly hope that that happens soon.
Not a problem, Mr. Gito. Your point is well taken and I agree with you. So with that, motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carrara, seconded by Mr. Kavy to adjourn. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Good night, everybody, and have a great night. We'll be in touch soon for possibly an additional meeting on the executive session. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Robin, thank you for what you did.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara.